It is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'm going to call the Anacortes City Council meeting to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young? Mr. Walters? Ms. Cleland McGrath? Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. McDougal.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Miller if he's unable to attend this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a second by Ms. Who made it for a second? Christine or Carolyn? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McDougal. A second by Ms. Moulton. All in favor, excuse me, Matt Miller, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Um, yes, Matt didn't have connectivity from where he is, so thank you for that, Bruce. Um, at this time, I'll move on to item 2A, which is the Planning Commission Appointment and Confirmation. And Don and I interviewed several members of the community, and we are recommending for confirmation to the Anacortes Planning Commission, Lynda Martin. She comes to us of planning commission experience. She is also a past school superintendent. She knows how to work with the community, have important conversations, and we're thrilled with her willingness to step up. So at this time, I ask for your confirmation in appointing Lynda Martin as our newest planning commissioner.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I move that Lynda Martin be appointed to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. McGrath?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath, to affirm Lynda Martin's confirmation to the Planning Commission, um, today on October 12th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Martin. The next item on the agenda tonight is my weekly update on COVID-19. And in the city of Anacortes, Island Hospital to date has tested 6,327 people. We've had 69 positive cases, so it has crept up a few in the last few weeks. We continue to have only 10 hospitalizations, and we've had zero deaths. In the county, we've had 1,160 positive COVID cases, 99 people have hospitalized, and we've had 22 deaths. In the last 14 days, um, we're holding a 35.6 people per 100,000 in Skagit County testing positive. Um, of all the people tested, it's 1.5% of all people tested have been positive with COVID. In the county, um, one of the governor's metrics for moving forward is you must have less than 80% of your hospital beds occupied. We're at 79.1% of our hospital beds occupied at the moment. We also, um, COVID cases must be less than 10, and we're currently at 1.4. And then, in the U.S., we've had 7,830 cases of COVID, and we've had 215,000 deaths. Globally, we've had 37,700 million, 37,700 cases of COVID, and 1,009 people have died of COVID in the world. And that is my weekly update on COVID. Wear your mask, stay safe. Thank you. At this time, I'll move on to the Port City Liaison Committee meeting. And if whoever would like to report on that, I open it up to you.
Ms. Mayor Gear?
Yeah.
Hey, yes, uh, Mr. Young and Mr. Carter and I were all in attendance, along with you. Um, on October 6th, we had our meeting. Uh, we discussed a little, we started with kind of the COVID update from the city and from the, the port, um, just kind of continuing on the path that we are at, um, maintaining our PPE and closed buildings and trying to support our businesses and our community. Um, the port has been opened by appointment only. Um, their marina for specifically July and August was the busiest ever they've had, so that was really exciting for them. Um, they're working remotely, and the big news is that they, they've tentatively set the date for the Anacortes Boat and Yacht Show for May 20th through the 23rd of next year, so hopefully that will continue to move forward. Um, the city is doing their, their business as is, um, and the next issue we talked about was the depot restroom update. Um, permits were approved, they're continuing to coordinate with Dakota Creek Industries and the port, um, and hopefully a December install for those bathrooms with the additional, um, sinks so that it, they can be utilized by the farmer's market, um, for sanitation purposes. Um, the port's working on their big four projects, uh, the ADOC, Quiet Cove, Cortis Wharf, and Pier One, and they're all moving ahead as expected. Um, we talked a little bit about the North Basin redevelopment and our next steps, and the city and port are in agreement that we want to, uh, work on a development agreement so that we can understand kind of the scope and desires by both entities, and we can have a, a positive working relationship to kind of address that Northwest Basin and have a, a good master plan. So, um, that's continuing to work, move forward. Uh, there was a, a little interesting thing about the Pier 2 outfall we discussed, there was some, uh, some damage to a vault, and so both Public Works is working with the port, kind of figuring out, um, what occurred, and, uh, we'll make sure to, um, address those issues and get to the bottom of it as soon as possible. The, with the wet season, it might take a little bit longer than expected, um, but, uh, yeah, everything's going well, and so we're, we were happy to have our meeting and look forward to our next one in November.
Thank you, Christine. Any additions to that? All right, we'll move on then to our Public Safety Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Carter?
We had our meeting with, uh, Ms. Cleveland McGrath and Mr. Miller, yourself, the Police Department, Fire Department. Uh, I'll start with the Police Department side. Uh, we have a few, uh, vacancies open, so the Police Department is going to be creating a hiring list. Hopefully, it's going to be starting with laterals, trying to get some people to lateral in. The Police Department is also trying to get a detective on the drug task force for the county. It's a full-time position where he would be, he or she would be working for the county on the drug task force, uh, but the whole county would be benefiting from it. Also for the Police Department, uh, the last three weeks, they have seen an increase in dog bites and campaign sign vandalism or reports. So we could just keep, uh, have everyone keep their dogs on leashes and stop catching campaign signs. That would be great. Uh, on the fire side, uh, we are back to normal call amounts, uh, even so as, uh, from, compared to before the virus. Uh, and then on top of that, we have another 10 to 15% increase on calls. Uh, now that, uh, people are starting to get outside, they're starting to see more calls again. We do have a couple people in the Fire Department that are out on sick leave, and another person is transferring out of the department. So the Fire Department is also starting, starting a hiring list, but it's getting kind of difficult because the Fire Academy is shut down right now due to the virus.
Thank you. Any additions to that?
Uh, Mayor Gear? Yeah, so the only other thing we did was we had a little bit more of an in-depth discussion, um, about kind of homes that cause nuisance to the public and neighbors. Um, so we talked with, we had Don Niesmer join us, and then, um, uh, Captain Fuller and Captain Floyd, and kind of had a discussion of what, um, avenues that both the Police Department and then also the Planning Department have to kind of address those challenges. Um, also kind of looked at, because of, had, had a report, and we always, and what came out of that was that it was really important that if neighbors see issues, to report it, use, kind of, use 911, use the police, because the police can't be everywhere. So if you see, you have concerns, feel free to report it and kind of get it documented. Also that, um, uh, uh, pub, or, I'm sorry, Planning, Planning Director is able to kind of address some of those issues if there's, you know, not utilities being paid or things like that. So, um, it really requires kind of neighborhood watching and reporting to assist both, um, the police and things like that. Um, you know, Matt, Matt Miller was also involved with that meeting and, and really brought up the challenges of, um, using the jail systems when we were having, um, people with difficulties, um, with substance abuse and whatnot, and that, uh, the jails are really careful about putting anyone in them right now because of COVID concerns and making sure that appropriate distancing's happening. So, uh, we're kind of in a unique situation, but it's, it's a concern that's come up with our citizens, and I've gotten reports about it. So we're really, really trying to look at all of our options, um, and have a good communication between various departments. Um, so, I, if you guys, if council has any other questions, I'm happy to answer it. But I just thought that that was, we're, we're working on, you know, seeing how we can deal with some of those problem homes.
Thank you, Christine. Um, number QE is our Fiber, Fiber Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
McDougal?
The Fiber Committee met, uh, on Thursday, and, um, following, you know, the, the Fiber Department themselves had presented the Monday of last week, uh, good report. Couple things to add, or to basically to build on, uh, last week's report. We have significantly, or officially blown past the 35% goal in our three trial zones. The, uh, the actual numbers are now, we're right about 39% if you, if you average it across the three trial zones with a high of, in the Central Business District, we're at 43% of market share, and M Avenue, uh, just over 33%. So that's great news. Uh, citywide, we're actually right about 20% of, of the city has signed up for service. We've got about 335 customers in service right now. Um, 200 and roughly 70 of those are residential, the remainder are business customers. And, um, and service activations continue. We've got, um, there's a little bit of a slowdown in activations just because we had kind of run up against the end of the, uh, well, the easy-to-do installations in the trial zones, and so they've been kind of more, more difficult, some underground installations, that sort of thing. Um, starting this week, we've got construction resuming in the expansion zones, so this is kind of, um, if you'll recall from the, the map that the Fiber Department held up last week, there's kind of an area, um, west, west of Commercial and kind of around the, where the high school district is, and then a, a bunch of space south of, um, about 22nd and, and Commercial and up, up even, uh, almost to, or like, almost to Mount Erie Elementary. Um, so some of those neighborhoods, kind of aerial, are being, we're expanding into those kind of through the rest of this year, construction beginning this week, um, including, I think, next week, some, some underground stuff as well. Other items to highlight, so that's, that's going to be about 1,300 additional buildings passed hopefully by the end of the year, and, you know, the, the installers will be following the construction crews, so be, hopefully getting back to quick, um, installs here in a week or two, or, yeah, probably a couple weeks. Then also, um, the Fiber Department is looking into expansion for 2021, and they've identified it, it's essentially looking to do, um, should we be able to secure funding, and they're looking at grants and things like that, but if we can secure funding, they're expanding into essentially the entire community sort of east of D Avenue. So that's the goal for 2021, and, uh, and hopefully we can get that in. And that's the main items to report on from the Fiber Committee. Uh, Mr. Walters, did you have anything else?
Uh, the only other thing I'd say would be that we did ask for a memo from the Fiber Department describing their budget request for 2021, including projections on how they'll recover, uh, those costs and over what time period, identification of what point fiber revenue will cover their operating costs and when it will eventually cover their infrastructure build costs, just laying all that out, um, based on the information that we have now, which is obviously better than the information we had before we started the project, when we put together our financial model, sort of a true-up with ongoing projections, so that we can take that into account in the budget process for this, this next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
Um, I just wanted to add a, a little anecdote. Um, internet service was down across, I would assume, the island, you know, I think it's one of the reasons that we stated Mr. Miller was unable to join us, but it was down across the island. What I thought was so interesting about it was that there was a number of messages that did come through either to my phone or once my internet came up, all touting, uh, the city of Anacortes, uh, internet access, and that they can't wait for it to come because this may not have happened to us if everyone had our internet at this point. So I just thought that was a wonderful little anecdote to people, and they're talking about what they can place.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, so we're going to move on now to the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
Hi, thanks. We had a, a meeting just prior to this at 4 o'clock, um, Ms. Cleveland McGrath and Mr. Walters and I with staff, and we talked with the President of the Habitat for Humanity Board about the possibility of Habitat potentially leasing some city property out on West Fifth Street, um, for affordable housing. And this is very beginnings of those conversations, and they will come forward to council. Where it is now is, the conversation was about Habitat being the, leasing the property from the city and then doing all the administration and working with the homeowners, et cetera. But we will get more information from Mr. Doyle and, and Habitat about what they are thinking and how that may work going forward. But again, very beginnings of these conversations, as, if this is going to be a possibility, that we will address at council. Um, then we had a meeting with some people from Helping Hands, some of the staff. Helping Hands has taken over the Anacortes 100 Food Bank at the Anacortes 100's request as they lost their, uh, nonprofit status. And Helping Hands is doing drive-through service on Wednesdays and giving boxes of food to people from Anacortes and also around the county, and even people as far away from, as from Oak Harbor. They are looking at finding a building where they can do their programs and services. So that was a, a good conversation with them. They need a facility. Next, we talked about our third round of CDBG funding, and the city will receive $110,000 roughly. Um, prior to that, we had received the HUD funding for small business development, and we, this is, this is new money that we talked about different possibilities. Does, do we have the Housing Authority get some? Does the Stanley Center get some? Or do we save it for our small businesses, many of which are going to be struggling even more in the winter months to come? So we sort of decided to just sit on that and, and think it over and not rush into any decisions with that money. There have been 30 applicants from small businesses for the Skagit Community Foundation money, which is $101,000. So those are being, um, reviewed. And basically, this new COVID money, the idea is that we want to use it for the best long-term effect on our community and use it as, as leverage for our future stability, um, economically. We talked a little bit about our strategic plan for homelessness and, um, money that has been available for motel vouchers, um, and lastly, we talked about the R4 moratorium and work plan, and we will be discussing that further this evening, so I won't go into that. The Planning Department is still really busy with single-family residence permits, and they are just, just rolling along with those. And we actually talked briefly about looking at the ACFL regulations sometime here soon, so another beginning conversation. Um, oh, and you know, I just realized that was also, um, Planning Committee report, same people.
You put it all together?
Yes, it all rolled, it, it all rolled together, so thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Carter?
Uh, I also was going to kind of bring up the Helping Hands Food Bank, uh, since we touched on it a little bit already. Uh, I just wanted to add that they have seven distribution sites across the county, uh, and they also deliver to anyone in the county, uh, so anyone in Anacortes that needs it, uh, that's COVID positive, disabled, senior, they can call them, and they're going to deliver it out to your house so that you don't have to go to a distribution site. Uh, so that anyone that can't drive or can't get food access or anything, just go ahead and give them a call and get that set up, and they'll deliver it to you. Uh, they also deliver 2,100 bags of food to children in Skagit County every Friday. And also, they have been through DSHS training, and they can assist people in signing up for medical, childcare, food assistance, cash programs. Uh, they work one-on-one with individuals that need any kind of assistance from a DSHS. Um, and I want to bring that up again, but they are looking for a place in Anacortes that they can have a permanent place out in Anacortes. Right now, they are out in Seadrill Woolie, uh, but they would like a place in Anacortes to make it easier to serve our community after taking over, uh, Anacortes 100.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Are there any other additions to any of the committee reports? Right, at this time?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters?
I just thought it might be appropriate to note today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is not entirely coincidentally the same as Columbus Day, uh, which we here at the city do not celebrate as a holiday. Um, and I wonder if there might be some way to more formally recognize that in the future through a proclamation or something like that.
I think that's a wonderful idea. We've got, we'll do it.
We have 12 months to plan ahead now.
Okay, and, and you're going to help with me do it, okay?
Usually.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we got that. Now, thank you for reminding us, that's important, Walter, uh, right in. All right, so we'll go on to item 3, which is public comment, and this is for anyone that's in the audience that would like to speak to the council about something that is not on the agenda tonight. It's your time to speak up at this time. So, all right, let's see. Do we have anybody with their hand up? I don't see any hands up. Okay, so it's your opportunity to make a public comment. All right, I think we can move on. No one is, needs to talk to us about anything that's not on the agenda. So we'll move on now to item 4, which is our consent agenda. I've got items 4A, B, and C, and these are all three action items, our minutes, our approval of claims, and a contract order for outside bond council services.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I'd like to pull item 4B.
All right. Mr. McDougal?
I move we approve items A and C from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Carter, to approve for A and C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, item 4B, approval of claims in an amount of $1,527,388. Mr. Young?
Yes, I, I wanted to follow up with, um, Ms. Wetnam about, um, an idea we had earlier about the, um, using city, uh, getting with the governor's office or the Attorney General's office to find out if there, because of COVID, if there are any flexibility on how the city goes about making those purchases. And wondered if you heard anything addition to that, Ms. Wetnam?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. Um, it's a, it's a really good discussion, and I appreciate you following up on it. Um, so after we had that initial conversation, um, we started by kind of, I started by looking at, you know, what's out there that we could work with now? Are we allowed to do that under the rules that are in place now? Um, and, you know, we've, we've talked about this in the past, why we've got the, um, prohibitions against local pre, uh, preference, um, based on the competitive bidding laws that are in place for the state of Washington. So there, so there isn't anything out there now that would allow us to do, to do that local preference beyond what we've got in our, um, procurement policy. Um, so, uh, so then the next kind of question is, how do we look into seeing whether that's something we can make happen? Um, so, uh, like we kind of said last time, the Attorney General's office is not really available, but I did, um, get a contact at the governor's office and reached out to ask whether that's something that the governor, um, would be looking at, you know, giving some local preference. I, I don't have any response back yet, but I appreciate the reminder, and I will follow up again because I think that's a really good question. So, thanks, thanks for following up on that.
No, thank you very much. I just think it's so important, particularly now, given all the efforts we're making as cities across the country to help small businesses survive, and I just thought that that, if possible, that would be one way we could additionally help them move forward, wherever possible. So thank you very much, Ms. Wetnam, for the response. With that, I move that we approve the claims in the amount of $1,527,388.84.
We have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. McDougal, to approve item 4B. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Now we're on to item 5A. Um, this is a closed record decision hearing, um, LPS-2020-0001, the Crossing Pides Preliminary Site and Site Plan. This is an action item, and Ms. Rage, can you talk to us about this tonight?
Yes, thank you, um, thank you, Mayor Gear, and good evening, everyone. Um, so tonight, we do have scheduled a closed record decision hearing for DeCottage's preliminary lot, unit lot subdivision and site plan. Um, the closed record decision hearing does allow for participation by not only the applicant, but also by parties of record. Um, we have about 30 parties of record for this particular project, and as of approximately 4:00 PM today, I have, staff had heard from several parties of record with concerns about, um, internet and phone connectivity, um, and concerns about whether they were going to be able to participate in, in tonight's proceedings. Um, and I've, I've heard that since, some of that connectivity has been restored, um, but I also think it's important that we make sure that all folks that may want to participate, that our parties of record are able to do that. Um, and so, uh, staff is going to recommend this evening that we continue the closed record decision hearing, uh, to November 2nd, and that is the next date, council meeting date, that the applicant would be available for a meeting.
So, um, so I think we just, as a council, do we need to take a vote on that, um, Darcy? Or is that something we just agree to?
Sorry, I, I think council can just agree to continue it is fine with, with the, um, you know, connection issues that have been going on, so.
Okay, so everyone agreeing to that. So we'll be back on November 2nd, um, to, um, have a closed record hearing, uh, because as you stated, we, it's really important that the public be able to, all the parties of record be able to participate. Um, and I only, I only see 11 attendees tonight, and I don't know who, so if you have 30 parties of record, that tells me somebody isn't getting through this evening, so. Well, thank you for that, we'll move that forward to November 2nd. If there's no other discussion, we'll move on to item 4, uh, 5B, which is a public hearing that's open for public comment. It's ordinance 3076, extending ordinance 3054, an interim ordinance declaring an emergency and adopting a moratorium on the acceptance of certain land use applications in the R4 zone. This is an action item. Mr. Niesmer?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Ordinance 3076 is an interim ordinance extending ordinance 3054 and ordinance 3069, a moratorium on the acceptance of certain land use applications in the R4 zone west of Commercial Avenue. Um, that would propose to That would propose to use the bonus height provisions of AMC 1942-050C, which essentially would allow height from 40 to 50 feet. The current moratorium under ordinance 3069 expires October 21st, 2020, and due to the current pandemic, city staff have not been able to meet the work plan schedule. And so, we are recommending the approval of ordinance 3076, which would extend this for another six months, expiring in April of 2021. For that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We also have a resolution on the agenda upcoming for adopting a revised work plan. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, I don't see any questions at the moment, but are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Let's see if anyone's hands are up. I don't see any hands on that. So at this time, we'll go back to the council. So I guess I'll close the public hearing and then we can take action.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I think when this last appeared before us, we just asked for an update to the work plan, and that's the next item. So I move approval of the ordinance as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item six A under other business. This is Resolution 3005, updating a work plan for the height bonus in the 4R zone. This is an action item. Mr. Meesmer.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So Resolution 3005 updates the work plan adopted in Resolution 3068. And again, regarding the bonus height provisions in the R4 use zone west of Commercial Avenue. The ordinance 3076 has been extended this evening through April 21st, 2021, to allow work with the community on various concepts. During February of 2020, there were a couple of workshops that took place with the community. And at that time, there were several concepts that rose to the top. There are about eight concepts that staff would like to bring back to a public workshop to remind the community of, you know, where we are, how we got there, what the concerns are. And then, from that point, staff would come to the city council with those concepts for the council to vet out and give direction to staff on which ones to move forward with. From that point on, we would go into another workshop, then on to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission hearing, and then on to the city council for final approval. I have for that first workshop to review those various concepts and remind the community where we are with it in October, so that would be towards the end of October. In November, we would hope to come to the council, get some direction, and move on with some concepts for public meetings at the Planning Commission phase. And then, in late November, we would be at the Planning Commission with the preferred concepts and issue CIPA. Planning Commission public hearing in December. Planning Commission recommendation on the preferred concepts to city council in December, January. January, February, city council review of those concepts. And then, hopefully, in February, March, review by the council and approval. It's a rather aggressive schedule, but I think that we owe it to the community to get this done in a timely manner. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Do you think that maybe we should add number one and a half or add number two and move the other ones down if we're going to bring, if you're going to bring it back to council before it goes on to Planning Commission?
Yes, we could put a 1.5 in there, go to council for direction prior to going to the Planning Commission. Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
I'll revise that to include it.
Thanks. Mr. Walters?
I think that's useful to us. I think it's important that the city's elected officials be the ones to identify which options we want to put out for public comment. Also, I think that we ought to avoid any public hearings in or around the Christmas break. So, I don't know precisely where that ends up landing, but if it's in the latter half of December, let's just shove it to January. I think it's useful to us to keep moving on this, but it's not so time-sensitive that we have to get it done by the end of the year.
Agreed.
So, are we going to take action on this this evening? Improve it?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters?
I'd suggest that we just make those changes and bring it back.
Okay, all right.
It could even be on the consent agenda.
All right, very good. Thank you. Everyone agree, is that a not head? Okay. A head nod? I got that all backwards. All right. So, we'll bring that back in a week or so, and we'll move on now to item six B, contract award for Grand View Cemetery expansion, Phase One, number 19-092 PRK-002. This is an action item. And I believe Nicole Johnson's with us this evening and John Lunsford. Nicole, there you are. Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor Gere and city council members. I believe John is with us as well.
I see him, yes, he's here.
Hi, Mayor, council member. So I'll just introduce the topic and then I'll let Nicole explain briefly what we're doing, and we'll go from there. So we went out to bid with the first phase of the construction at the Grand View Cemetery expansion. We had seven bidders. Tiger Construction, LTB, was the lowest responsible bidder at $214,304.34. So we have a couple of items to discuss with you, just kind of bring you back up to date since the conditional use permit was passed, what it is we'd like to do, and I'll hand it off to Nicole and she can take you through that point by point.
Thank you, John. All right, let me get you this full screen. All right, this is just a review of the Grand View Cemetery expansion. Again, thank you, John, good evening, Mayor Gere, and city council members. So we had a neighborhood meeting back in March of 2019, and you guys all approved the conditional use permit in July of 2020. And as John just mentioned, the low bidder was Tiger Construction, was just bidding the low bid over $214,000. The engineers estimate did come in at around $200,000, and the city has earmarked $250,000 combination of capital funding and impact fees to cover this first phase of the Grand View Cemetery expansion. Phase One details our site clearing, removing of the poplar trees and all the blackberry bushes, tree conservation, keeping the trees at the south end of the expansion, removal of the old access roads, even that stuff, the road that all the tree roots have started to lift up and no one really drives on it right now, if you're aware of what I'm talking about, there at the cemetery. At the end of this phase, that road will just be crushed gravel. Phase Two, which is the last phase of this project, that will be a new asphalt road. Also in Phase One, installing initial stormwater systems for collection, clearing the trees near Hill Crest Drive, installing a conveying ditch and treatment of road and site runoff, and then soil and hydroseeding the area. So in other words, at the end of this phase, the expansion area will be cleared out, with the exception of those few trees that we are saving for the project, and it will be seeded, hydroseeded soil and hydroseeded, so it should be just a big open field with the retention pond and construction fence for right now around it. And then again, the access road will be just crushed rock at the end of this Phase One. I know this is really hard to see, but this just kind of gives you a little idea. This is a site drawn. Let's see here. Without, I don't want to click anything and get this off the screen here, but this is all this circle dots around here are the trees that we are saving. Over here is St. Mary's Church, the top. This is our conveying swell down here, and this is our retention pond right here, going along Hill Crest Drive. This is where the pond will be. And this right here is that access road that I was talking about, that would be, eventually So our timeline for Phase One, after tonight's meeting, I know Tiffany, our contract specialist, will contact Tiger Construction. They'll then have to check insurance and the bonds, and we'll make sure to notice all the neighbors that are around the expansion, to include St. Mary's Church, just to let them know, give them a heads up that those trees are coming down and getting ready to clear that site. Yeah, we're making every effort to reach out to the neighbors and just communicate with them what's happening up there. And again, I think you guys know this already, but currently available in our old Grand View Cemetery, we have nine full burial lots left. We have 120 burn lots left, so there's definitely a need for an expansion of our cemetery at the now, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
I will stop sharing my presentation. You all have a good night.
All right, thank you, Nicole.
Yep.
Any other questions for Nicole or John from the council? Comments? All right, well?
Well, Mayor Gere?
Yes?
Just one comment for John and Nicole. You know, I really appreciate how you guys, the depth that you go to make sure that the public is informed, that it's very thoughtful, and you really do go that extra mile. And I wanted to let you know how much I appreciate it, and I'm noticing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
All right. Well, what's your pleasure, council?
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton?
I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign contract 19092 PRK-002 with Tiger Construction Limited in the amount of $214,304.34 to perform the Grand View Cemetery expansion, Phase One.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young. Is there any discussion? Questions? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, our final item this evening is item six B. It's a contract award for 2020 asphalt overlay project, number 20-192-TRN-001. This also is an action item. Mr. Buckamire, or is it Mr. Lang? Who's speaking tonight?
This is Fred. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, cool. I'm falling in from a different spot. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, staff is seeking the council approval to award a contract to Granite Construction in the amount of $446,190. This is for our 2020 asphalt overlay project. There's a map included in your packet, but basically it's K Avenue from 12th to 20th, 20th Street from K to I, and then a bit of Dakota Avenue up on, around West Second. We opened bids on October 1st. There were four bidders, and the city, the engineers estimate was, you know, not the highest, not the lowest, but somewhere in between. And the low bidder, the low bid was Granite. There was, I don't know, I'm going to say an uncommonly close bid between Granite Construction and Lakeside Industries, but Granite did come out to be the low bidder. And so, if there's no other questions.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, I think we're well briefed on this and it's all part of the plan. Contract looks good, so I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign contract 20192 TRN-001 with Granite Construction in the amount of $446,190 to perform the 2020 asphalt overlay project.
Mayor Gere. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
My second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, at this time, unless there's anything for the good of the order, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all for being here and I look forward to seeing you all soon. Bye-bye.